Add up to the building. It's designed, as you can see, to fly it and go somewhere in and then drop straight down. It's just a mirror on the other side going down. We move the dock doors to the front of the building. A little more paving and parking. How much do you have for the address? Do you want the address?
Yeah, okay, this is just the second one. You can see B is in Lloyd, West State Street. And what do you want to do?
For Dublin's building.
A square miles cap with or is it like, within one?
Yeah, it's 120 by 125.
125 by 40, yeah, 40 right now.
That's all the building lot space. The bearing.
I don't want to break you, it's 124.
Or brownie, you know.
Hold up, hold up. I want to come in and see if there's anything needed to go through and make sure we're... Talk to the building inspectors.
So, what do you do here?
We're a manufacturing rep, but we warehouse some products too. We buy, sell some things, but it's mostly our offices. We're expanding our office. Can't see the book we're here. We're running out of space. We're going to add the inside at some point a little bit more space for offices. We're just going to cost space now. We have a place in Foxborough, Mass. That's our main warehouse. And one in Syracuse. And this is kind of the mid-point of different houses.
The Foxborough warehouse is 27,000 square. Our Syracuse one is 16,000, but now we need one here. Yeah, we need something to cover.
How long ago did you build the first place?
Eighty-nine.
We should check to see if they've got something on record for the original.
We have. What we ended up getting, he couldn't find, but we found on all these pieces. So we have like pieces, literally. So, this was actually one of the originals. But like I said, it's all in, it's all in pieces. That's what they were able to find. We don't have this one.
So, will you be adding any parking?
Yes.
Well, is there no parking for that?
Um, well, actually, no. We're actually moving the existing parking because of the way the building is now and what we wanted to. So instead of having the cars come in and pull into the front, we're just going to turn it to the side. So it's going to be facing. Yeah. And we have that whole field in the front. So we're going to have a difference coming in.
Is it going to be paved parking?
Oh, yes.
And it's not a retail, it's really just a civil, like, parking.
I would think we need a plan.
Yeah, well, they're all for two. They feel on both questions I have. I'm going to set plan.
Just need to know when you get for it.
Right, yeah, we would just, we would get a whole site plan and we're going to have all that.
So we're only interested in civil. What goes on outside, site plan approval. So show that where the building is going to be cited.
Parking.
Where all the parking is going to be, you know. And then, because it's paved, um, you have to show on a civil piece of it where the stormwater, how the stormwater is being addressed. Whether it's, whether it cheap flowed off to the soil or whatever your engineer designs. Including whatever you do with your roof. I mean, you're in big part this year. It's not like we've got somebody at home, you know, a butter that's right there if you're going to wash out. That's what we're concerned about. You know, all the water from the roof, all the water from the pavement. It's got to go somewhere.
Yeah, we kind of figured that. I want to make sure it's all.
Lighting, if you're going to do any additional lighting.
Yeah, because we have lighting now, so we'll just put it on.
Building light, also.
Do we have lights? Parking lot lights? Do you don't have those?
No, so you said there are lights on the building?
Yeah, we have lights on the building that always.
They're not required because it's not retail.
But if you're, if you're expanding the parking area, right?
Well, we're actually moving it.
We're shifting it from.
So actually just to moving it is going to give us the additional parking, but not by a lot, just by a few.
Okay, we're leaving the parking in the front.
Yeah, right in front of the building. And what we're going to do is take it and just slide it over to the right. So it will go down this way towards this street instead of going across the property. I mean, there's probably going to be, we would have to have a certain amount of spots. That's, we're going to have to have, because we're expanding, we need to have handicap and that type of thing.
Yeah, you're going to have to have handicaps. You've already, you've already had, you've already had that. It's for private use, so, you know, you've got to have, it's up to you. You've got to have adequate parking for your pool.
Right, right.
Do you have any industrial signage?
Do you think it's on the building like we have this here? Put it in the. We have a small apartment.
Yeah, we have one by the street and one on the building.
So, so when you have your engineer, that's going to, if you have the building designed, you're going to have a civil guy there anyway, right? Just have them go through our bylaws and make sure whatever you do meets the bylaw. Otherwise, if it's something that you're asking for a variance or that's going to require a special permit, you have to hear it. Otherwise, you won't. So in other words, if the sign remains the size that's allowed, then you're good.
No, we're fine.
If the, if the parking and all that, it's, you know, there's nothing there that requires a special permit, then it's, it's an easy rubber stamp through us.
Great.
As long as you comply with the bylaws. Anything that you try to go outside the bylaws, then we have to have a hearing, a special permit.
Do you have certain civilizations you guys work with that you recommend?
No, we can't recommend them.
Or is there a list that I can pick from?
Yeah, we have a, a list that should be on the town.
Some, some town's website.
Yeah, I think I mentioned it actually. I have it in here.
But it's not, it's not a special permit, so we shouldn't require any, like, peer reviews or any of that.
So we'll get the site plan.
Yeah, we'll do that and then we'll be fine.
That's good though, you're friendly, huh?
Oh, yeah. It's actually, I'm excited. I haven't done any projects like this. You haven't seen the last name, though. Take care.
I like to make melt if they came out a little late.
And we want things done for you in the future.
Don't want the melt though, right there.
Hey, did everybody get down to sign up for those plans for the plant? Everybody get down to sign those plans for the plant?
You were, yeah, you were the last one. You were first, I was second.
I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, November 25 minutes as presented.
Present. Second. We've heard your question. I favor, aye, if we oppose. We have a bill from the PDC for, for violence. Services and binary valid planning commission to the town manager covering the period July 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2019. Your direct labor, $1,568.97, and your cost at 126.2%. The total, $1,908.4 for solar, $3,549.01. We also have mileage added on to the direct cost of $153.12 for a total of $3,702.13.
What do you mean by a cost of 126.2%?
That is, um, my health insurance, the, um, benefits. Benefits. I will note that the majority of the hours were spent on the solar bylaw.
Twenty-eight. So I want to approve the board debate. I'm making a motion to approve the PDC in voice. July 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2019, for the amount of $3,702.13.
There is second.
Second.
Any further stuff?
Yes. Is this the one that we kicked back, right? So that would be itemized?
Those are my bills.
Those are all.
Those were the last fiscal year. This is the first bill in this fiscal year in the new contract.
So is everything itemized?
The last page.
Breaks out. What is that?
Any further stuff?
I don't know if you have, did you second?
He did, he did.
I favor, aye. Any further votes?
It's just for the record, we have another four minutes that we are going to turn in this night. We can't, it's not.
Do you have the 5:15?
I have 5:15. And I'm going to get this. Which is the question we asked.
I'm making a motion, who's the working meeting to be recommitted after opening the public, after the public, the public's here.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor of the second? I favor, uh.
Aye.
At 5:15 p.m., we will continue the planning board in town random or public planning on Monday. The number of. Continue this, which will take us through summer night, 2019, at 5:15 p.m. A one delivery line entered by the top court. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of Donald General by National Sign and Work, applicant from the Wemby G D D series, L S C, on seeking a special permit in section 5.592, aye, two, and 5.5923. Considering internal limited lighting, a letter signed by Paul Main, and freestanding sign, a retail store located at 180 West State Street, Orlando, known as map 3 dash T dash 11.
Hi. After you give the record, my name is Heather Ducko with National Signs representing the signs installation of Donald General. So for us to come back to this meeting to provide some further information on the external lighting for the redesigned signs. So the original proposal is to have the signs internally illuminated. And just in summary, last meeting, the signs were revised and redesigned to be externally limited by the snake lighting, and they conform to the size and height regulations in the bylaw. There were some questions about how the bulbs themselves in the fixtures would comply with the section of bylaw when it's thrown included lighting. And I see that you all have a handout that shows that it will comply with that. The sign installed purchases a 39-watt bulb to floodlight, screw it into the fixtures. And you can use a calculations at, so you can test the bulb. And it falls well below the local emission. So we'll follow the guidelines. And I know that was a final kind of discussion amongst the board. If it could be conditioned approval without the information, but it was decided that we've got to have the information up front.
So, I'm not very good at converting.
I'm not either. I have to do it for me.
So obviously, we can read down our bylaws. It depends on, I mean, does wattage anymore from what I can see. So how does this match with our chart?
Well, it's above. So based on square footage, the total wattage of the bulbs, how many bulbs that I buy is square footage, gives you a wattage per square footage, which is what the section has to do.
So it's a little larger than a fluorescent, but not as large as yours.
Correct.
This is how, this is wattage for LED versus fluorescent versus LED. That doesn't. Can you see? That should just be people walking back here. Yeah. This is by the Engineer Society, International Engineering Association. So we see that it does say halogen up here, but when you read the narrative, it says it's the replacement of the incandescent bulb. So it's comparable to the incandescent. So that's why, that's why it's compared to that line on the chart. This is a pretty, right, right way to get a wall, we're looking at. It's a very low wattage bulb.
Would you, uh?
Oh, I wish I could say that I knew about lighting, um, other than, um, based on, I'm, her engineering team and based on the narrative provided, um, it seems like they're meeting it. It seems like they're meeting it based on the narrative provided.
Can you share my microphone now that we can't hear?
I just, I just said that it seems like they're meeting it based on the narrative they provided.
It seems like it.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
What she's saying is, is it Heather? Can you, can you, or people, we just said. This is.
Um, sure.
So, any, any fluorescent in the force?
Say the name.
Any, any fluorescent in the force?
Yes. Correct. So, a little, a little audience here wants you to have, have the, how it compares to our chart.
Do you want us to explain how it compares to our chart?
How?
How it compares to the chart that you.
Go one more time, see, and everybody's here, so for you to understand, we're on the same page.
So if you look at the section of bylaw where it explains what is externally limited signs, the section two here, there's a maximum illumination of wattage per square foot of sign depending on the bulb that you use. So that's the bylaw. So we were asked to show how the bulb that they purchased in temp lighting fixtures adheres in compliance with that chart. So they purchased a 39-watt bulb.
Halogen.
Incandescent.
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 How could you say halogen?
It says halogen. It says halogen.
Yes, but if you read it down in the description of this on the next page, these bulbs replace the incandescent, so they're comparable to the incandescent. So that's what we need to compare with our incandescent.
And what's the authority of that?
I'm sorry?
What is the authority of that information?
Phillips. The lady company.
Of that information? How does it in fact replace?
That's what the Phillips description says. So if you take the 39 square foot, I mean, the 39-watt, this is how they define the formula, based on the number of lights per side of sign. There's two lights per side, which involves 78 watts per side. And if you divide that by the square footage of the sign, which is 24 square foot per base, your output is 3.5 watts per square foot of sign.
And the sign is, is not been reduced? Sign's not been reduced.
And what is the actual, the halogen or?
It's a halogen that's complicated.
It's, it's described as a halogen, it's a spotlight.
Oh, but it is halogen.
Correct. Correct. But compare, it replaces, the product replaces the Phillips incandescent.
Just so we're, not to interrupt, so we're clear, so we haven't got to that point where we asked her to just kind of explain it, so we understand what she's talking about. As the board discusses it more, we want to make sure that something more here was clearly being meant to talk about.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll be very, very interested questions.
Quite frankly, I think it'd be something different once it meets the standards.
All right, let's now just open up the questions to the audience, for whatever further questions.
I guess I have a question about, hi, I'm here. I have a question about, you're choosing to use halogen light, which I, as I understand, are nowhere on our bylaws in description or permission to use it in signage. The quality of halogen is so vastly different than the quality of incandescent or any other light, it's, it's kind of like an ugly science fiction purple.
Well, I think from what I read, what states here is taking place of that whole...
I know it's taken place, they're talking about brightness, or they're talking about whatever they want to talk about, but it's not the same. It's very different. A halogen light is really a strikingly weird light. It's, it's, one of its main characteristics is extreme brightness, and it is on the purple side of the, it's not, you know, it's of the spectrum. I've used, you know, when we light with halogen, we can't even photograph it, it gets so ugly in this rendition. So not only are we, are we, have issues with the lighting there in the first place, but now we're talking about a light that's going to cast an incredibly awful hue. And if it's not in the bylaws, I don't think, I don't think there's any reason we have to accept the authority of, of any other Phillips or whoever. They say, what is an equivalent? I go to the Old Depot, they say, well, this is the equivalent of that under talking about brightness. They're not talking about the quality of the light or anything. They're talking about whatever, you know, what they feel you can get the same brightness for. So I don't think it is the same, but I think our bylaws ought to be reflected in, in terms of what type of light they're going to use.
Until the bylaws are actually updated and used in two thousand four, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. They're going to be, they're going to have five years, as far as that.
You can't change them now.
Right.
They kind of do. This is...
That's why I'm kind of...
So they're not, it's here and not, you have to follow it's here and...
Right, they're only eight fourteen, which is the updated one, has no halogen on it. We're mindful.
There is no halogen.
So you're saying that because halogen is not specifically stated, it should not be allowed?
I don't think, well, it certainly should be investigated, because the color, the color quality that is, is weird is a good way to use it. If this, we're not, we're not here to tell the company what to use, we're just here to make sure that they fit the bylaws. If they want to use a light that gives a purple hue, as you say, so be it, that's their option. Fine, but it says a level, uh, yeah, regardless of the type of illumination employed, all illuminated signs shall be properly shielded, this is not shielded, and so located as to prevent glare or blinding effects upon motor vehicles, traffic pedestrians, and so as not to cause a nuisance to residents or the area. I mean, the area halogen will cause a greater nuisance than what I consider to be a nuisance in the first place, which was the, the sign in the first place. So I, I think it really contradicts the bylaw.
Well, what I really think it comes down to is you just don't want the sign.
No, I wouldn't like the sign, but I would like to have some sensitivity towards the, the voice of the community that has issues with, with, with signage, bright signage. It's going to be the brightest sign on two oh two. London Domins doesn't have a sign like that.
The, the blue sense fixtures are designed to be, you know, when you see them over the top of the sign, and they're turned in to only light the sign face. So the spot, so the, the light itself is, is screwed in, and it's shielded by the fixture, and the light will only shine on the sign face. The light does not project into the neighborhood, it doesn't project into the road, it's designed to shine on the sign face itself. So it is, it is shielded, and it won't cast any glare.
I, I disagree, that's not shielded. I mean, you always have, you always have glare coming off of the sign, that's the nature of lighting.
Classic, right.
And it's a, it's a sign, a sign designed to intensify the light and even hits it. So I think, you know, I think it's a problem that, that is halogen in the first place, really. I'm not, I'm not just drawing this out of my, whatever pocket, halogen is really an awful, awful color.
But that's, that's their choice, though. It's bylaws.
Is it? Well, how can they choose things out of an ordinary light bulb? It's my choice to say, hey, why don't you choose something that's either incandescent quartz, fluorescent mercury, metal halide, or high-pressure sodium, which this, which this city has considered to be suitable? And then you're saying, well, it's not our business if they want to use something that we haven't even considered.
Can you suggest that they have a lighting expert?
I think, you know, we really need...
Have a lighting expert talk to us about this.
I think we need to be educated. Educated, really, because it's, it's a whole, again, it's a whole new ballgame, because it is language, for one thing.
Look down, so from, from what I'm reading here, based on the, the sign, this is the ground sign only that we're talking about, we're not talking about the wall sign. It comes down to three point two five watts per square foot. So if you went to a, a condensant, incandescent light...
Well, it's their, it's their stance that it is an incandescent light, so I am not lighting expert as well.
Right.
I understand that you have more experience lighting.
Well, I have.
Like, when I, when I show them the criteria, this is the information that they told me, and it's based on incandescent, because that's their stance that it's an incandescent light.
It further goes on to say, if the color of floodlights or indirect floor illumination is prohibited, this is indirect illumination, and it is, it is a strongly offensive color.
Again, no disrespect, sir, but that is, you're, you're saying it's...
I'm saying it's...
That's your opinion.
Yeah, no, it says, it uses the word offensive.
She's saying it's strongly offensive color.
But that's the bylaw.
The bylaw doesn't say it's a strongly offensive color.
Okay, it says color of floodlights...
But that's the point I made.
Okay, okay, you're right, you're right. But I'm just saying, I, I think it is offensive.
I understand that.
If I may, I'll manage to go, thirty-four, Harry who wrote, um, I think there was a little confusion at the end, you suggested that an expert come in and take a look at this, because basically, except for my neighbor, nobody else really knows a lot about lighting. And that's, and I can say that because your consultant here, the first thing he said when he looked at that is, and I'm quoting, "I wish I knew more about lighting." So, you know, I wish I knew more about lighting too, and I think that you guys really think that, you know, that you should know more about lighting, because this is, is something that affects us. Does Dollar General affect us? Yeah. Do, you know, as a businessman, do I think you shouldn't have a Dollar General? Not necessarily, no, because it's business, and business is business. But, you know, these are, these are the things, you know, you might think that they're my new, but they're not my new to us. And as I pointed out, it's not in the bylaws, whether or not he thinks it's ugly, or it's grossy, or, you know, whatever, it's not in the bylaws. And you guys, and no disrespect to you, but it appears as though there's some confusion as to what's what, uh, we, you know, what was presented. I think that, you know, some further conversation about it should go on.
I think what she has presented is what she, she took back to her client, and they recommended this bulb, and based on that, it is a halogen bulb, well, what they, the reference when they looked at it, it represents what it would be in regards to incandescent bulb to meet our, our bylaws. And I do understand what you're saying, that it's not, halogen's not there. And it'd be the decision of this board whether or not we would want them to follow suit with exactly what's in our bylaws as far as finding a, a bulb that meets that. And I, all I'm saying too, when I read this too, looking at it, I don't know a lot about lighting, but I know, I know a seventy-five watt halogen light bulb floodlight gives off, because I have some.
But you do, but you also, you're, you know, your whole basis for what you do is based on the bylaws. I mean, that's, you know, what it comes down to. If it's not the bylaws, then what? Then it has to be looked at further, and that's clear, it is not the bylaws.
Well, that's, then that's the point getting to.
Yeah, so, you know...
The language of the bylaw does state that illumination may be provided by those certain types. So...
I'm sorry.
May be provided, may be provided by incandescent floodlight spotlights or ordinary incandescent bulbs, fluorescent tubes, mercury vapor, or metal halide quartz, or high-pressure sodium lamps. So they're just, you know, stating that. It's not a exact prohibition of that type of bulb, and I think as the applicant has provided...
I'm leaving, I'm leaving, I'm sorry, is there any support for residents here? I am sorry, excuse me, sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this man just...
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'm so sorry, this is, it's really hard to know that you are not representing us.
Of course, I, I'm representing.
You're representing us!
I am representing Tom and Randy.
It's really kind of raining!
Right, I am following our bylaws, and I'm listening to the gentleman that's...
I'm sorry, I just, it's been a long day, I've been sick for...
Nothing's, nothing's been said, nothing's been, I mean, so, the gentleman speaking is telling us what the bylaws does say. Ken, what were you saying?
Um, yeah, so I think, you know, the discussion about the halogen bulb, again, it's not directly said in there, however, the language maybe is used. So it doesn't, um, it, it, it is a, it is a, a discuss, a discussion by the planning board whether or not, you know, that, that it's necessary to have that in there. And obviously, the applicant has presented what her team has brought as, as a lighting instrument, and that is listed here. You know, and it does ask the board, or it does state that it replaces the fifty watt incandescent bulb, and so, you know, it, it, I think it's, it's, it's a comparison that the planning board may, um, may consider taking, or consider, but it really is, it's up to the planning board.
And again, it's less than half of what's allowed on a law.
Right.
So what would be worse, three point five or seven point one incandescent quartz? You know, we're talking on one of those, right?
Well, that's, that's why I am with two, it's, it's, so if you say, now we want them to use a incandescent bulb, does that become worse? Now it becomes sort of, it can go up in illumination for the area. Right now, about three point two five watts per square foot.
Whereas now...
Where if they decide to go quartz, they can go fourteen point three alone.
I don't know what's out there not to light that, right?
That's a lot per square foot. Well, just, you can't cover everything. You'd be changing the bylaws every six months when new technology comes out. You have to have, you have to have that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Susan Knight, thirty-two Ferry Hill Road. So just start to think about as a planning board, light trespassing, because that's what's happening here, and that's what we're concerned with. You know, as you know, me worked really hard, they've been here for thirty-five years, it took us thirty-five years to get here. I do not want to have to leave, because already there are lights just from their construction glaring up the hill at our homes. Light trespassing is something you're facing. Court, if you don't start to pay attention to it, this is a beautiful town, we have a lot of wonderful...
We have, we have bylaws, we have bylaws that...
It's not us, from us, you're facing from the, from the town membership, because people are concerned. I wish we had a lot of these here.
I understand that, and too.
But can I just finish? So light trespassing is important, light pollution is important. I understand how important it is also to develop two oh two, but I want to tell you, with the exception of these two people last week, I have not felt like anybody on this planning board has represented us. Last week, when she ran out and said, you ran out after her, that was inexcusable to us, and you shook their hands, but not our hands, and she was mansplaining. I'm sorry, but these are...
Well, ma'am, ma'am, but I'll do respect, you have no idea why I left here.
It just, I'm just, you came back in, it doesn't matter, you came back in.
I, I came back in, ma'am, because I forgot my bag.
Okay.
Okay, that's exactly why I came back in, and I, and I didn't fence down to them, sorry, I'm calling you.
Okay, I'm glad we cleared it up.
Well, you, you put it on stuff out there that's not factual. I left here...
Then why do I feel like you're not representing us? Why do I feel like every time any one of us says anything, all you do is counter for the business and not for the residents? I have not heard you consider us, and you would have had this passed to me through.
That's not true.
You did, and Luthen did, but I haven't...
And then I, I would suggest you, ma'am, you go back and watch the film, because there's many times I'm listening to what people are saying, and I also listen to them.
Well, we will...
My job, my job to sit up here is to listen to what people are saying, direct the board what you're going with.
Then can I just tell you then, feedback, it did not feel that way here, it did not feel like we were being listened to, or that our concerns were really being addressed, except that two people decided they wouldn't vote with, with the other two folks. It also doesn't feel like our council is representing the citizens, except, except what's in here. Leonard just read what he said, and it felt very different when he said it, didn't it? Leonard just read the same...
He is, he is someone that represents the board, opposite board, that's what he is, that's why he's here.
So I don't know, it's where did it pass, we feel? If you're going to go ahead and pass this and not pay attention, and get a little more information, because I think nobody here knows. I think he knows, he knows what it's going to look like, and how it's going to hurt two oh two, it's going to hurt the scenic route of Ferry Hill Road. You've got a scenic route on here, it's in our bylaws, this is, I was only, this is Ferry Hill Road, and it's going to flare right up there, past fifteen feet it goes, it's higher than the building, it will reflect up the hill, that is a very big concern to us. It invades our peace and quiet and beauty at night, and our sleep, and I'm begging you to please think about this, get some more education, because you don't know the difference between the incandescent, the halogen, or the LED. And then we can have a, a person, an expert, talk to us, we can all sit here at the next meeting, and have somebody answer your questions, and educate us all about, this is an important step for granting. If you let this happen, then you have precedent, everybody else can do it. So let's have an expert talk to us about the difference, and the difference in this situation with a plastic sign that reflects, because this sign is bigger than Memorial Drive, this sign is bigger than, than Belcher Town. We're a mile on either side from dollar stores, and their signs are smaller still than what the, and greatly less than what this will. the, and greatly less than what this will. Please, do some research, more research, have an expert come, he can, they can, she here, she can talk to us, it can be a conference from someplace in the world, of somebody who knows it.
So, and again, it's, it's up to them, and again, I would challenge you to go back and view the past years, because I can take offense to the, to the Congress.
I apologize, I'm glad I heard you, I'm glad we cleared it up.
I think I'm very forthcoming in listening to the people when they bring up, uh, concerns that they have, but it's also my job to make sure that both sides are heard, and I don't perform an opinion, I ask questions, and they may seem like they're unfair to someone, but I'm asking questions for, more so the board has more information that can, uh, they can make a decision on. And it doesn't mean it's my personal feelings on how I ask the question, but sometimes a question I, I feel needs to be asked, it doesn't necessarily mean I feel that way.
But why is it that I, every time we mention something to you, you have a rebuttal? That is not the case when the other party speaks to you, and there's not, that's not the case. You're not rebuttling on that side of the equation, but there is a rebuttal every time we have spoken, you have rebuttals when you say...
The applicant is, the applicant is providing information. When you ask a question and speaks that, if I know something to it, I will respond to that, just like anybody on the board would, would do so. It's not saying that I'm against anything, and I think it's fair for now...
So, can we do this? So, is there something that will prevent you from having an expert come and talk to every one of us, learning her straight up, this is going to help Grandy? They can do a conference, and we can all ask questions, and then they can say, well, actually, what's going to happen is when you have a plastic sign and a halogen, this is actually what's going to be illuminated cubic footwise. But, if you have an incandescent and a painted sign, this is what it's going to look like in turn, and I don't think anybody, any of us know enough to answer that.
Well, our, our job here is to make sure that what they're requesting meets our bylaws.
And it doesn't, it doesn't...
And, and, well, again, and at this point, that's what this board is going to discuss, uh, what we feel, whether or not it is or it's not, based on some information to those given from Ken. That's something we need to discuss, whether or not we feel we need more information. It should be, be exactly what is listed here or not, that's something we need to talk about as a board, and figure out what we need to, or, or, or additional information before making a decision.
But, does anybody actually have any expertise here to know exactly what this is?
Again, and our job is to follow the bylaws. It's not, the, the bylaws are borne on by the people of Grandy, they're put in place, they're approved by the attorney general, this is what, this is what guides us.
Right.
And until these are changed, and these are all good things, you can bring it up, and not dispute that one bit, and those might be something good for, for future bylaws.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But we can't, can't put things in place that don't, don't affect our, our part of our bylaws yet.
But you are, if you approve halogen lights.
No one's saying we are, that's, that's what you're saying, no one up here has even said that yet.
Do you ever bring an expert in and have a teleconference during the planning board meeting?
We've had, uh, different people come in to tell us information on certain things.
Right, right.
But...
Would that be something that the board would be opposed to?
I, I, my personal opinion, and this is up to the board, I don't think we need an expert to tell us, uh, because what it comes down to, if they meet, you know, if they're going outside, if, if saying, hey, there's all that we can find is, is halogen lighting, that's it, that's all the absolute we can get, but then we may want to reach out to someone to explain to us more, what, is this feasible to this? And again, just hypothetical, I, I'm not speaking for the board. Uh, but also, in looking that, they may come back and say, okay, we're just going to go get, here, it says, uh, incident lighting, well, that's what we're going to get, it says the water can be certain, sir, here you go, this is what we're doing, it meets your, meets your bylaws. And we may have to, and that, then that's something we got to look at that point.
Yeah.
So, that's, I mean, it's all reasonable things.
Just one other thing, um, has anyone addressed the fact that the goosnacks are higher than the 15 feet? And is there any way that we can ensure that the light is lower than the roofline? And if that's the case, then we solve a lot of the problems in terms of paying that glow, you know, kind of coming up the hill. So, is there, is there any way we can make sure it's...
You know, you know, listen to, you know, and again, since when's it, the first applicant came out, the building, I think they listened to a lot of things that were being said, again, how they designed it. And again, now with the lighting, I think they're listening to what people are saying. You know, I, I really, they're not, many times they've been saying...
Oh, she's going back and forth to it.
Many times, they've been saying they want to be, the applicant said they want to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like, so, modest is just like, the wood, wood could be that, but you know, like I said, a lot of them are saying that they want to be good neighbors.
Right, so is there, I'm asking again, is there any way that we can make sure that that sign is, I, I know that it's, the sign itself is 15 feet, and then the goosnacks are coming over, so they're kind of extending the, so I guess what I want to know is, does there's any good measure to make sure that that light going in that drive is lower than the building? But it's not, in other words, shooting up to people who are passing through Ferry Hill Road.
My, my thinking is that that light's going to be shooting right at the sign.
Right, right.
Right at the sign, so that's what they want, that's what you want to be illuminated is the sign, so, or manage to be pointed right at the sign itself.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, if, you know, the sign will have a glow, because it's, it's fluorescent, uh, yellow, plastic, so it's, it's shining, it's, it's, heck, it's going to shine beyond that, there's going to be cubic footage around it, right? So, what I wanted to ask is, is there anybody who's looked at the 15 foot in the building and assessed whether or not that's going to, like, spill out and, um, be trespassing and shows the light there? From the pole sign, yeah. I mean, I thought it was a great suggestion last week to have a sign on the side of the building, and I don't know why that couldn't be. You've got the front of the building there and the street side, having their name again there with more goosnacks was a great suggestion last weekend, and was completely disregarded, and I thought it made so much sense for the passengers coming by, for the community around, for the woman living up the street, up the hill, who's going to face the sign. I, I thought it was a great suggestion, by the way, so, uh, I just don't know if anybody's considered it or not.
Well, I think they, they probably have, but I think they, I mean, I...
No, I mean, the planning board, because the planning board said, is that going to go above the, uh, the building itself, where it is, is it going to be higher than the building? And will it be visible over the hill, or is it going to be a little bit lower? You know, the sign at, uh, Memorial Drive is only that wide, out on the street, and that wide, that wide, that wide, and low lights.
Well, that's because they have about 15 other stores, 10 other stores trying to set the sign.
Exactly, exactly, but I'm just saying that's...
And it's their code or ordinance.
Right, right. It's just that it's smaller, I mean, just you don't have, they're noticed, you know? Anyway, nobody's considered, I guess, right, nobody's considered whether or not it's shooting over the building or not.
Well, I would imagine with the street light, that the intersection of Crescent and West Side Street is higher.
Yeah, but that's, it's a soft glow light, it actually is not, it's a very nice light. It actually just blows up like a little sunbeam up the hill, it's not a...
What's that, what's that? What type of...
It's a duty LED, I think, I think it's a LED, it's a very soft...
That's one of the ones they changed.
Yeah, it's a very soft yellow light, it's lovely, it's not a problem, yeah. That should be a LED, because National Guard will have to change it. Right, yeah, I see now.
Can I ask for something, or say something? Carol Mazzarello, Ferry Hill Road. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, I thought the whole idea of a hall sign was only okay by special permit from you guys. You can mix the entire hall sign if you choose to, am I correct with that statement? Is that right?
I don't know.
I thought hall signs were by special permits.
It's allowed on a special permit.
It's allowed on a special permit.
So, I, I guess I'm not clear with that.
So, it means that if you meet the, you, you just can't put one up because you feel like putting one up, but if it meets the criteria, falls under the bylaws, meets the bylaws, so it's approved. We need, we, you can't just say, no, you can't put it up, and they could just say, your bylaws is, I can have them, why can't I have them? And we'd have to defend why you can't have them.
Okay, so then, just turning down what Susan said, what if Dollar General or the lighting company, whoever it is, um, they were kind enough to reduce five feet from 20 to 15, and what we talked about several times during these meetings was the different signs, uh, 202 that aren't 15, pole signs aren't 15, so what was brought down? I don't know too, like, 12 feet, 10 feet, then that may take out a lot of the issues with how it's going to be with the goosnacks and all that. I don't see, I went by, I went today and I drove into parking lot, um, because I can see my house, and that big 40 foot amount of dirt is on, I cannot even imagine how bright it's going to be, but, um, so, we have, as Susan said, the residents, we hope that you represent us, we have nothing against a city or a lighting company, we just feel that you guys are going to go on to the next thing, and that's fine, but we're going to live it 24/7, and we really would like you to consider that, and be good neighbors to us within the town, please. So, it's not just a, let's shut it down, let's get this over with, really please. If it's another law, I'm sorry, but, um, we've waited this long, and for us, it might just be the difference between maybe shortening the sign a little bit, or changing the lighting, so we'd like you, please, consider that before you make the final decision. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me ask you, this is a good, just hypothetical, because I'm, I'm wondering, what would, besides illuminating sign, what would, what would you be okay with?
What if I, Dollar General, what if I have a normal signage? You know, honestly, after, I'm a lighting expert at finding stretch, I've been noticing signs only because of this whole thing, um, the internally lit signs are actually now starting to sound better than this, but I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, um, this just sounds very, like, bold and screaming at you, and so, maybe we can soften it by a turn? You guys are all right, except for the size of the sign, so maybe we go back, um, Dollar General's happy, they get their internally lit signs, or as happy as we can be within the bylaws, that, is that an option? I don't know.
I don't know, that's, that's, that's up...
That's what we like here.
Yeah, it's up to Dollar General, that's up to them, that's their decision, I'm sure that they're paying, every time someone moves back, they're paying that person a fee here, they pay that fee, that person a word, and I know, and again, that, I'm just stating facts here, I know some time ago, that a big concern about, uh, illuminated sign that was taken home in the first place, and they took that information, they brought back a different thought, different idea, but no one really wanted that. So, what I, and again, I, it's, it's just based on things on what was said and the facts of it here, that's what they're listening to at that point, they brought back a different thing. So, that's up to them, if, you know, if we put that back and say, well, we'd like to do this now, what if they come back and say, okay, this is what we want to do, or we're going to put down that one again?
Susan Knight with 32 Ferry Hill Road, do I do their turn? Uh, so, here's what would probably make us really happy, is probably an artist painted sign with a candis, uh, an incandescent light shining on it, just like everybody else has on this beautiful stretch of 202. I love class grass, I go down to all power, I mean, we're all over the place, and the only thing that's brightly lit is your, the, the car wash, which I hope they turn the lights off at some point during the night, but everybody else is, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is soft and quiet, the bike shop is soft and quiet, but it's still lit, I still can read the sign, but if they had a, an artist painted sign, and it was an incandescent light, that would make us very happy, and if it didn't go over the rise of the building, so that we weren't looking at it all night long. You know, it is our, it's our property value, and it's our, our quiet enjoyment of our homes, and, um, it's, to me, it's a character of the town, and where are we going from here, and what's going to really help? Somebody wrote on Facebook last week, well, we're not like a cute little Vermont town that has all these shops, and I thought, are you kidding? I bought gift certificates up and down to, do we bring them? And there were great little shops, and it came along, but...
And over the years, people have, like I said, gone to, uh, town meetings, have changed the zoning areas, because they wanted, they wanted this type of development to come in, to be, to be, to help out, to tax base, because a lot of people are sick and tired of tax base just being on the homeowners, you know, so that's, so at that time, that was all, you know, the, just look at what the people are saying, uh, you know, bylaws would change to, to represent that, and so, you know, that's, that's, you know, basically what happens, when bylaws come up, people are there to vote, change things that they feel are needed.
But you're doing together, I mean, you can maintain the, the ambiance and the allure and the beauty of this town, and the character of this town. And this is going into the scenic stretch of the prettiest downtown in this part of New England, I mean, the Grandy Common, it's, you know, the kids who've moved here, who went to UMass and Monopoly, you say Grandy, and they say, oh, yeah.
I, I, I can speak this board, I, I've lived here for 26 years, and that's even, that's a fraction of what the other three members of this board have, that live in this town.
Yeah.
And it's back to generations of people that live in this town, when this town was probably verge of being a small, little, small, small little town, mostly farm, I bet. What do you guys want to do?
Well, I want, I like to stand.
Do you have any information? I'm told the building height is 32 foot, the sign is 15, and the goosnacks are 25, so the total would be 17.
Good stat.
Just...
Do you have a tall building, because I don't have to...
32.
I'm sorry.
Is that, that's at this part?
Right, there it is.
Yeah, I think that's the peak, it's 32, and I think it's, that's 28 to 27. So, yeah, that was 27, the sign was 15.
You've got to imagine, the signs are wrong, and it's 15 feet.
Is the sign near St. John's?
Ma'am, I don't even know the answer.
Hi, I'm Nancy Everett, 18 Crescent Street. I didn't realize, I, I'm, I'm, came here for another reason, but because of where I live, I actually can see the building, they, you know, now that the leaves are all gone, it will impact, I didn't realize this, my backyard, especially if the signs are facing 202. So, I am really curious to see what this looks like, if there was a presentation that they could put up there that say, this is how the sign will look on the building, this is how the sign will look on the street, some kind of visual aid on a screen, so we can see that. That would be helpful, because now I'm thinking, I've got something special catering to deal with every time I need to turn onto Crescent Street, that light blinds me, I can't imagine having one more right there when I'm trying to turn onto Crescent Street, I'm already impacted by that light, and now we're going to have another one, and I know I'm going to have problems, and I happen to be the only one, Crescent Street gets very busy this time of year, people use Crescent Street to get home. So, I'm, yes, trust me, Crescent Street, where the highway department is, is busy. Um, and so now I'm thinking about this one, yeah, there's going to be some impact with another red light right there at this time of year, also the fact that I am actually seeing that building in my backyard, and I'm, yeah.
Oh, pardon me.
So, no, this is, this is...
There, there is a restriction, so...
So, there was some information at previous meetings that came out, a little picture of the sign, and stuff like that, the signs that we're getting, and so on, so forth.
Okay, that we appreciate it.
But there is a bylaws, if I may say so, there isn't a bylaws, no sign is supposed to obstruct a driver's view, so if you have hazards, it's here.
Oh, there are, yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
Well, that's, that's something that would be left up to an expert, that's something that they would decide on that.
However, my question, my, my point is, are those lights from the news store going to be shining across the street facing Chateau Harmony?
No, so they're, they are shining, so the, the Dollar General sign that is on the, the post sign, the lights are facing right at the, uh, the sign itself. Um, the actual sign that's on the store is on the opposite side, it's not facing 202.
Facing St. John's machine.
Yes.
Yes.
Which impacts you guys very much, yes.
But there's also security lights.
In that, right.
There is also...
Right, yeah, then there's a block light.
It's perpendicular to the, to 202.
No, no, I understand, well, is it near St. John's machine, or is it after, where? Isn't it the entrance?
It's on the west side of the...
As I drove in the driveway today, and I couldn't understand where the sign was going to go. Is it 25 feet in, or is it...
So, what keeps that sign, this is, this is, this is the...
20, 20 foot from the property line.
You know, we're talking about the...
It's for the action street, it's in the property line, so that's more than us.
Do you have a larger plan, site plan?
Uh, I don't have a site plan. I don't have one last time. So, that's a little bit here. The sign, the Dollar General is yellow, it's running yellow. We have this, we have this, this is... So, last meeting...
So last meeting, these big plans that we've brought?
We should have.
I'm not sure where, but some should have. A location of sign, John. One on the property line. By State Street. Here's the store.
Is that the best that we've devised? Is that the revised?
My understanding it is, yeah, because that's the gooseneck plan. And it shrunk from what was initially presented.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I think I have the. I have the original, if that's what you're looking for. But it's small.
Look at this if I get it back. There's a sign. It's 20 foot back from the property line. Again, still have all this job. 20 from the property line.
From here to here. And the sign itself is. Is what. Three by eight. What's the next?
Four by six.
So that's one. You're about 30 feet. So you've got 20 feet from here here. So you've got about 30 feet from here to the building. The building is facing E.
I could see. So this is the outside.
So you've got three.
Two.
Here. So this is here. Here is 17. So this is already, so this is. So your sign is here. Back about 20 feet off the building. And it's higher here. Higher here. The E building, which shows, so it's. So the sign, so the children should watch the signs. It's only 20 feet off. So the answer is here. Okay, so here's the building. We're at 32 feet here approximately.
Uh huh.
Actually, 20, I'm sorry, 32 feet here. 29. Almost 30 feet here. The sign. The sign.
Yep.
The sign is about 20 feet off, about 20 feet off the building. So it's about, so that whole, this whole facade. So it's 20 about 20 feet. Huh? Yeah, it's about 30 feet. So 20 feet, 20.
Building's up the wall.
Right, it's a building, you look at the sign, the building would block it.
But can you show us where the sign?
We're figuring it out right now. So we showed it, yeah. Exactly what we're doing.
You're saying that the brown sign would block the sign?
Because the building would block the brown.
Right, the building would block, block the brown sign.
You want to see this, Paul? Okay, so this is the facade facing 202. This is the, this left side is the facade.
The front, right?
There. This is the.
Where the sign will be.
The sign.
Yeah, that's what faces our property.
This is what faces the east, I guess, if you will. So this being the facade that's facing the street. The sign is about 20 feet off the building, which.
20 feet to the property line.
It's 40 feet off the street.
Forty?
Forty feet off the street and about 20 feet off the building. So the building, right here, is approximately 32 feet here. And 20, almost 30 feet right here.
So from here, where's the sign?
So the sign would be, if you were to look at.
On 202?
No, on 202, it'd be here. 20 feet off of this. So this would block, this being 29, almost 30 feet, and the sign being 15.
Right, but what I'm confused about is, you were saying it comes up here.
Correct, because this is 202.
Right, this is the front of the store here, right?
This is the.
If we walk.
The 202 elevation of the.
But if this part of the store right here is facing, right?
No, it's not. It's facing this direction.
That's us.
This is 202, sexy.
So 20 feet off the building, approximately here is where the sign is. Which would make it 20 feet off the property line, 40 feet off the pavement.
But it's in front of the property here or here?
Here, that's what I'm saying. It's going to be.
202.
Really on 202?
Correct, on 202.
Just 20 feet. So we walk from the road, we just go 20 feet.
No, 40 feet.
40 feet off the pavement, 20 feet off the property.
If you're walking on 202, the sign, yeah, the sign is 40 foot back.
Can I ask though, what I'm curious about is, I just, it doesn't make sense to me. If we're coming this way, the store is right here, right? I'm trying to figure.
Yes, but not the entrance, not the entrance. You have to go around to the entrance.
This is the entrance right here. Comes in, you park in front.
Right, and then you walk in the store.
Okay, okay, yeah.
You come in, you park in front of the store.
Okay, gotcha.
This elevation is. This is the elevation that faces the street.
202.
202.
So they're putting this whole sign right smack in the middle of the building.
No.
It's somewhere.
So this is it, right about, right about.
And this is all landscaping around it, right? That's that landscaped area around it?
To give an idea, so if that's the building right there, we're probably sitting right beside it. If that's the building.
15 feet up and this facade here is 30 feet. 29.8.
Right, but you don't understand, we're right here. We are right here. So whatever you have, I can't still assess where this is in terms of.
No, we're further, we're this way. We see this and on the lights, we're going to see that. No problem. We're looking at it.
You won't see this, you won't see the sign.
You should be able to see the sign from where you are because the building should be blocking it.
Because it's on this side of the building.
Well, even this, so this here.
That's the E.
So you.
This peak here, this peak.
But even the E is 17 feet. So the lowest part right here is E, is 17.
It's the whole sign down the draw.
That's it, 17, 17.
That's what I'm asking. The E is.
17, 17 feet.
In how you enter.
Right, so it's 18. That's the E. So the lowest part of the roof.
You know, where the entrance.
It's 18.
So what if it's 20 feet from the building?
So if the sign was that, was against the building, it would be here.
Yes.
Forty feet. But much, much bigger.
No, it's a scale. It's not.
The scale is not because like you said, the building, the sign's what, 15 feet?
15 feet.
15 feet. And the lowest part of this building, which is the E right here, is almost 18 feet. It's 17 feet, eleven and a half.
Are these all the windows on all sides with the lights out on them? Yes?
Well, the lights go out at night.
They were saying the lights would be internally lit all night long.
No, we understood there was going to be interior security lights all night at one of the previous meetings, not lighting meetings.
Yeah, but I think the difference between like security lighting and regular lighting.
It's not like the.
And the light, security light, I'm sure it's slightly combed down.
Right, it's just, it's just, it's security lighting. It's not like it's, it's not like lights. So if you can see what's going on, it's on the bottom of the building, the security light. So if somebody needs a verb, they need to see when they go there.
There will be motion sensitive stuff going on all the time.
Yeah. So going back to what you were saying before.
I'm sorry.
So kind of going back to what you were saying before. So the actual sign should not be visible from your house because the building is actually on its way. So the highest point of sign, you take the 15 feet and you have the actual light, maybe over a foot or so above it. That's still.
The light doesn't, just the stem. The light is still below 15 feet.
Even the stem, even the stem goes up. So even the stem goes up two feet, that's 17 feet.
Oh, so is the light itself lower on the sign than the 17 feet?
Yes.
Because it goes up like this, or goes down.
15.
Right. The light looks like it's almost the height of the sign because it goes up and it's backed out of the sign after, at.
Do we know, does the plan where you know what Dunkin' Donuts uses at night, what they're doing, what the C D S uses, or whether they're incandescent halogen or?
Well, see, if they could use an halogen, I mean, as time goes on.
I think it's on E. I don't think, it's rare for us to use halogen.
Yeah, anything's possible, whatever they use for lighting. But the point, so going back to what we're saying, is that even if it's up at 17 feet, the Eves of the roof line, which is the lowest part of it, is actually 17 feet, eleven and a half inches. It's almost eight. It's called 18 feet.
It's right on 202.
Well, it's 18 feet. So actually, the lowest part of the building is actually still higher than the sign. And the sign is probably, depending what, so you look at it, it's a quarter from one side or three quarters from the other side. And it's going to be below the sight line. The building is, you know, so if you're standing on, you're standing on the side of the building, you probably won't even see the sign.
Well, that's the reason for us to have it there.
It means lights are going to be angles down onto the sign.
Right, so that the lights, if I understand, the lights are, I mean, I would think are angled right towards the sign, light up the sign. They don't want to light up the area around the sign. They want to light up the sign. That's the point of the lighting.
I mean, if they wanted to, it can be, and I'd tell them that it can't be incandescent. And they do it through incandescent. I don't know. I don't even know if we use this stuff anymore. High pressure stuff.
This is what they want.
There is an L E D. There's no, I didn't have a L E D.
As long as the lumens stay between.
The wattage, right? The wattage. It should be.
It should be. But that's how, that's how you convert it to the halogen, right?
The wattage.
By the wattage. So if you can do the same thing with L E D.
Okay, I don't know where it can fall into because there's no.
Well, except we have that one. It says may. Somebody says may. So it may, because it may have to be this or it may have to be that. Because time changes. Not a bill, not a bill, not a bill, not a bill. It may not invite somebody.
Right, I've never heard of any of us. And I know this, I mean, neon's forgiven us right here. So no neon. They do use L E D, but I just didn't have a unit to go by. I just had a unit to match it with the chart. I don't know what we would use for the.
We don't care as long as the lumens don't, so stay in between.
Right, but that was actually, it's not listing on the chart.
It doesn't matter because it says may. Did you hear that? The applicant, the applicant, folks may want to hear this.
Yeah, sure.
The applicant made a concession that they will go to either an incandescent or an L E D as long as it meets the watts per square foot.
That would be much, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would be much appreciated. It's a much better light.
It's the board. The condition either or, as long as it falls in within.
So are you okay with an L E D light?
This gentleman said, or this lady said she loved the ambiance L E Ds gave off.
Well, I have the bright.
All I can say is LEDs can be programmed, you can buy from very warm to very cold LEDs. Very thin. Halogen is very specific as far as I know.
Or even here, she said warm.
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 Warm is a good word.
Warm is a good word.
It's warm in the summer, it's cold in the winter.
No, you don't.
No.
Something to go towards blue.
It's a different.
You go towards.
Because I'm a different field.
Red is much more.
You good with that?
Blue is more penetrative.
As we say in the special permit, it has to be either opposed and within the chart.
Correct.
So I only suggest if they go L E D, that it be more towards the warm side, i.e. the red side of the spectrum than the blue. Blue is a much more penetrating light.
Okay.
We have our own lighting answer. We can't help it.
We, well, that's all hearsay as far as we're concerned. Sorry.
No, 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 we didn't. Steve was just talking.
So, or they come back and just, they're working lighting, that's it? So, or they come back and just, they're like, a light, and that's, that's it?
Is that, is that everywhere, do I ask Heather, do I ask you? Is that also on the front of those?
Well, they'll match, they'll match.
They'll match, okay, thank you.
So we're okay with LED?
I would say, I would be okay with a warm LED.
I second that.
I'm not gonna get...
Would, would you prefer a, a cold LED versus a halogen?
Well, I would, I almost have to say I'd have to see. Cold LED...
So we're just gonna get some, we're, we're, you know, we're telling them it's incandescent LED.
We're, we're supposed to hear. So, excuse, I'm...
That's all we're gonna look at. What, what, they're, they're open to what we're gonna suggest, so I don't, I'm not gonna try to, try to break down and say, this is the light you need to go by. If we're okay with it, either LED, they'll decide what LED works for them, or incandescent light, they can say, okay, this is what we're gonna buy, as long as it fits within their, their thing.
I can say, I can say back to them that they prefer LED, incandescent, or LED is acceptable, with preferences for a warmer LED.
Thank you, that's appreciated, that's, that makes it sound, thank you. See, we're not, we're not...
I don't think anybody said that, except for Paul, he just said it.
Yeah, I do wanna say, I do wanna say, I went back to them, I showed them the chart, and they followed the chart. There was no LED listed on the chart. So because the chart is, the lighting has been, you know, the lighting, the technology, the lighting, so there's, there was nothing for them to follow, which is, which is qualified, what LED I used, and I just took, tuned, adhered to the chart. So that's why it's incandescent.
They'll look at it, they'll match, they'll match the...
But there was nothing LED to follow, as in the sign, as in by construction, we took a picture of the chart.
But we, and it's...
Bring it up as a condition, if you'd like.
I know, that's all my information, this is...
Well, at this point, I was gonna ask, is there anything else from the audience at this time?
Okay.
No, I, I, thank you.
Thank you. And, and, and truly, I mean, every thought, input, was listened to, from all of us. And I, like I said earlier, whether, how you see it, or whether you think it's someone, it's, our job is to ask a lot of different questions, so we necessarily need that, how we feel, what we think. And we need to ask questions that need to be asked.
I'm, I'm making a motion to close the public input end of this hearing, and just the board will discuss. Second.
Any further discussion? Go, I'm in favor. Aye. Everybody vote. So, which will be set, who everyone will get as far as conditions?
That's not all of it.
This is the sign by the... The phone on one side. It's only three conditions, um, it's under, um, two... Um, I had conditions a few months ago, and I'll bring it in there. Under the, um, five point five hundred conditions.
You too. Thanks, guys. Take care, good night. As well.
Number fourteen, each commercial and independent industry, shipping, truck, and trailer, street address numbers, in four inch high letters on the entrance door.
In the next store, on the street side.
Such sign shall be excluded from the items of information at that location. Did you hear that? On the, on the entrance door. So that's one. Now, it's under certified five point five by non-conforming signs, um, there's a paragraph about abandonment. Except, as otherwise provided in this article, any sign that is located on property which becomes vacant and is unattractive for three months or more, or any sign that pertains to a kind of mental purpose, which no longer applies, shall be deemed to have been abandoned, that goes on, um...
Yeah, that's not a condition we put on, that's a, that's a bylaw that the code enforcement officer has to enforce.
Okay, but I, I think the needs would be spelled out in there, so that they don't have to go back and...
We, we can...
There's another thing, while any vacancy of any longer than, um... Any message or sign of signs that identify or represent an individual business that is not present, shall be removed within thirty days. So that would generally, all...
Yeah, I, I understand all that, but we can't put all the bylaws in the conditions.
What else do we...
Sign bylaws, but we can't put all the bylaws in, in every, in conditions on every...
Okay, well, we can leave that one on the, um...
Yeah, yeah.
The street address number, in four inch high letters on the entrance door. And, and leave the LED, please. Incandescent LED with a preference of a warmer...
The numbers, in front of the sign by law?
This is the sign by law.
And the num, the numbers around it?
Yeah.
Should have a picture of it. This should have the building, it should have the building, but it gets caught.
But I didn't bring it up then, because it's in the sign by laws. It wasn't, we weren't...
I know, but the, the, the fact of the matter is, it should be in the, the other, because if they weren't coming for a special permit...
Where would that number be?
Where would the number be?
That's what I mean, it seems like it's in a lot of places.
Hard to address everything now. All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve. The sign, both ground mounted and building mounted, as presented, with, with, with a couple of conditions. One, the, the, uh, street numbers are placed on the, on the front door, per bylaw, for, however it reads there, four, was it four inches you said?
Yeah.
Four inch leveling.
Street address and, uh, street address. Um, in four inch high numbers, on the entrance door.
Condition two, I would propose that... Sign lights to be turned off at closing, both, both, uh, uh, ground sign and building signs to be turned off at closing.
I saw it on the general, I think it's in Berkeley, on the post, it has a big Coca-Cola bottle, so I prefer no average pricing, other activities in the fold.
You, you can put that in that, it's, it's not allowed in any...
So no additional...
So, uh, condition three, no, no additional signage?
Permitted.
Permitted.
Okay. And you want to put them all on the LED, the second one?
Okay, and then, uh, the fourth condition would be that the applicant can use either incandescent or LED illumination, provided it meets the current bylaw. Of X, of X amount of wattages per square foot.
Um, shall I add any, um, yeah, LED with a preference towards a warm LED?
You can't put, you, see, there, you, you can't do that, you can't preference.
So that's your fault?
She knows that, oh.
That's all.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Is there any?
Well, wait, are we doing it again?
Any further discussion? Do you wanna move back on that?
Um, I'm thinking of a draft for the city of Rutherford, New York. To approve both ground mounted and building mounted signs. As presented with following conditions, street address in four inch high numbers on the entrance door. Sign lights to be turned off at closing, both ground and building signs, all prepared. No additional signage permitted, and applicant can use either incandescent or LED illumination, provided it meets the current bylaw. Do you want those four feet and all that in there?
No, it's, they gotta reference the bylaw.
Any further discussion? I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We're opposed.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Further discussion? I'm there. Aye.
I think you have a member from the public.
Yeah?
I think you have a member from the public. Maybe?
What was, what was the question?
No, that, that, um, lady said that she was here to address the board. Yes.
Can I have a word with the, uh, special program? Yeah, then you have twenty-one days, you have to, challenge, and then it's automatically being sent to the, uh, to the...
Who, the applicant, I mean...
Yeah, close to the floor, and then you send, she'll send it to me after twenty-one days, and then she'll go to registry report, right?
Correct.
Okay, great, okay. Sometimes I don't have to do it for special permit, that's something.
Oh, okay, so, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you.
Oh, that it? You here for something else?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, you just said that.
No, oh, I'm here too. Oh, I, I'm here because I'm taking a class, a journalism class, and so I invited out Stephanie Randy. And so, uh...
I'm making a motion to adjourn. Second.
Any further discussion? I'm in favor? Aye.